I'd like to call this November 12th Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and first up, we have Jimmy Galavan to give our Student Council report.
Good evening. I'd like to just give some updates about stuff that's been happening in the high schools as well as the district as a whole. So in 21st Century Knowledge and Skills, student life specifically, high schoolers and SMS language teachers have restarted weekly tutoring sessions for SMS students in language. High schoolers have worked with middle school students to improve their language skills, also serving a valuable mentor role. In the arts, the Somers Musical Company hosted the annual Somers Son Book Disney Edition on October 25th. High school students were all able to perform and listen to their favorite Disney tunes, creating a fun event for all. Additionally, the SHS Musical Company also announced their upcoming fall production this year, which is going to be Clue onstage. And students in French and music classes recently took a trip to see the Teconic Opera perform Carmen in Tarrytown. The opera was performed in French with English subtitles, so students were also able to use some of their French language skills. In athletics, student athletes have also entered into the championship season of fall sports. Many student athletes have excelled in their respective sports, and winter sports are going to be starting in a few weeks. In social, emotional, and physical wellness, and counseling wellness teams continue pushing to health classes to deliver DBT lessons to students in grade 10, while middle school classes deliver lessons at the same time. This year, students will also be making posters to highlight the emotional regulation strategies they learned that they found most effective. The poster students vote on as the best will be produced for classrooms, both at the middle and high school. While the college application season is still in progress, to date, over 100 colleges have visited SHS and counselors have submitted documents to support over 750 college applications for our senior class. Additionally, the college search process will formally be kicking off for juniors, beginning with Junior College Night on December 5th at 6:30 PM at SHS. Students and parents will have an opportunity to get an insider's view of the admissions process from visiting admissions counselors. As a reminder, parents and students in all grade levels are welcome to attend. Finally, the next two weeks mark an important stretch for ninth graders as they have begun their individual meetings with counselors. At the same time, our social workers, psychologists, and student assisting counselors will be pushing into ninth-grade English classes to deliver self-care lessons. These lessons focus on things like strategies to maintain healthy relationships, healthy sleeping, eating and screen time habits, as well as how to recognize the signs when someone is in distress and how to get help. And in global citizenship, specifically student life, this Saturday, Student Council will host a Fall Ball Dance at the SHS, and all profits will go to benefit the Raimondo family, who tragically lost their son Michael in the recent shooting. The dance will be from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and tickets are $15. Additionally, a winter clothing drive was recently held at SHS. Students were able to donate old winter clothing, which will now be donated to the Northern Westchester Community Center. Those are all the updates I have for tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, this brings us to our first public comments section for agenda items only. Are there any public comments? Okay, then that brings up our central office report on our next Element of Excellence, 21st Century Knowledge and Skills.
So Liz Turner and Tara Kern are going to present this portion of the Forward in Excellence Report, 21st Century Skills and Knowledges. I will try to keep up with the presentation, driving the PowerPoint since Chris Platanian is not here tonight.
Thank you so much. And tonight, we will share a summary of various student performance results from the start of this 24-25 school year. And this is certainly an interesting time in New York State education as we highlight the 21st century knowledge and skills necessary for our students. The State Ed Department continues to embark on the work of the Blue Ribbon Commission. This work began back in 2022, and it is a group of stakeholders at the state level taking a thoughtful look at graduation measures to explore what a New York State high school diploma means and what it should signify to ensure educational inclusion and excellence for all New York State students. So this changing vision will include recommendations to the Board of Regents on measures of learning and achievement that could better serve New York's diverse student population. And it will also offer recommendations on what should be indicators of what students know and need to be ready for college or career or to be part of the world. So forms of assessment under this will be reimagined to support the state's portrait of a graduate. And this portrait is well-rounded. It includes multiple facets, including performance-based learning and assessment for 21st century skills. It includes global citizenship, social-emotional wellness. So it's great that we have emphasized these areas in our district vision over the years. And we should be well-positioned to support any changes that are needed as more information becomes available from State Ed. This is an ongoing process over many years. So the state updates also tie great this year to our work on strengthening our multi-tiered system of support structures that we call MTSS. As part of our K-12 MTSS conversations, we're thinking deeply about our different forms of assessment and the information that each assessment provides us and the measures that best inform our instructional moves for students. As you know, we have different forms of external assessment in our district, including STAR ELA in math, state tests in Regents, there's iXL snapshots, DIBELS, and more. And some of those serve the purpose of being universal screeners or state benchmarking, but unfortunately, don't provide us with much more information beyond just a score, while some other measures provide more diagnostic information. So the conversation now is coming back to our curriculum-based measures and the valuable data that those assessments can provide in conjunction with the external measures. There's inquiry-based, performance-based assessment happening, K through 12 in our district, to help round out the picture of students' performance. So like the state, we're also having the district conversations on what we value in assessment and making sure that we have a balanced vision for MTSS. As I mentioned earlier this fall, this year Renaissance STAR re-norms student performance percentiles to reflect the national norm of students who took STAR reading and math in 2023. It hadn't been re-normed since 2017 prior to that. So as a result, across the nation, schools are seeing shifts in students' performance as they start this school year. Some grades of students starting the year a bit higher than usual and some a bit below. We referenced that when the principals were here back in October to share the success plans. So we continue to research the difference in the norms. Tara and I actually have a meeting with the STAR representative this month, who will work with us in taking a closer look at our SOMERS data and that re-norming effect that's had on SOMERS students' performance. So tonight, as we kick off our data sets, we will kick off with students' fall performance in STAR reading and math, as well as our tiers of support in our exit grades of second, fifth, and eighth. We have this information collected for all grade levels. But like the state profile of a graduate, we felt it was important to showcase the culminating performance of our students in the exit year of each school building. We also highlight these grades in our K-8 SMART goals for each building. Next year, our hope is to combine this presentation on 21st century skills and combine it with the conversation on the building SMART goals and success plans to draw better connections for everyone listening on the why behind the work that we're doing in each building. So we have our slide here on Primrose Elementary School. And I would just like to review the format you will see on these slides moving forward. Remembering that once again, we're focusing on STAR reading and math supports and student performance. Please note that the pyramid to the left highlights the percent of students utilizing or in need of different types of supports when it comes to reading and math. We call these the tiers of support. Tier one support is general classroom instruction and practices that are available to any student. For most students, that tier one is what they need to meet or exceed grade level benchmark. And then for some students, they may need more targeted, smaller group support in addition to the regular classroom instruction. So this percentage of students, we consider receiving a tier-two level of support. At tier two, there may be a combination of both in-class support as well as small group intervention support. It may even be intervention support outside of the classroom. The small group support may focus on addressing gaps in a student's foundational skills. It may also include instruction to help preview or review skills that are being taught in the general classroom. We also have a smaller percent of students where support needs to be intensified further, either by frequency of sessions during the week or a smaller group size. And we consider these students to be receiving a tier-three level of support. These types of supports are typically delivered by an AIS teacher or a special educator. These students may be receiving alternate types of literacy or math instruction as part of their programming, with an emphasis on multisensory approaches and addressing the discrete skills needed. Tier supports, though, are meant to be fluid, where students receive what they need, their progress is monitored, and adjustments are made as needed. So tonight, we're reviewing students' performance on STAR reading and math, but remembering also that there are other ways that we monitor student progress across the year. Using DIBELS in reading, it's an assessment used K through eight, and it's a foundational assessment of reading skills, as well as iXL math and iXL ELA data that helps us monitor overall skills of students. This year, as I mentioned, we're also looking into curriculum-based measures at the K-5 level within Witten Wisdom of the knowledge-building block, at the 6-8 level in our NYPD LA units of study, or our math assessments that we have, and doing that work as part of our professional learning time. It's very helpful to use the multiple measures that we have, so the information is well-rounded, and we can use a well-rounded set to make instructional decisions for students. So back to the charts again. If you look to the right, we share our fall 2024 performance levels on STAR reading and math. On this assessment, remembering that results fall in three categories: those students meeting or exceeding benchmark, those approaching benchmark, and those performing below benchmark. So if we take a look at Primrose, grade two, our exiting class, in reading, 65% of students are meeting or exceeding the benchmark, with 15% approaching, 20% performing below grade level. Now, there's a combination of supports that take place that impact the results we see here. And remembering that this is information collected right at the beginning of the year, September, when students take the STAR assessment.
Is this re-normed, the more recent STAR re-norming?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. As I mentioned earlier, of those 65% of students that are meeting or exceeding, some may only be in need of tier-one general instruction in the classroom. Some require additional tier-two smaller group instruction. And for some, they may need the additional tier-three style intervention to meet benchmark. So it can be a combination of things. This fall, 60% of second graders require the tier-one classroom instruction, while 28% need additional tier-two small group support and 12% requiring those tier-three supports. And as I mentioned before, we're certainly very eager to have the STAR re-norming conversation around our second-grade data to better understand effects on performance and the needs of our students. Primrose continues to use the phonemic awareness program Hegarty in all classrooms and the phonics program of foundations to support students' decoding skills. Witten Wisdom is now incorporated for the knowledge-building block to provide an interdisciplinary literacy approach to support students in building background knowledge, their comprehension, their vocabulary, their writing. And I do want to take a moment and commend our elementary teachers on their work in implementing Witten Wisdom for our students. We knew going into this choice that it was challenging, it was a dense program to navigate, and their collaboration and their efforts in bringing that knowledge block of literacy to life for our students has been absolutely remarkable. There was great work accomplished this summer in groups of teachers coming together to analyze that curriculum and start to put it in place. And I know there have been many tiring nights for our teachers as they have gone through those materials. So I just want to thank them on behalf of myself and the rest of the administration for the efforts that they have put into that. We're truly grateful for that. So now shifting to take a look at STAR math. Similar for fall of 2024, grade two, 59% of students are meeting or exceeding the benchmark on STAR math, with 18% approaching benchmark, 23% performing below. And once again, a combination of math supports take place, different supports for different students to help push them to or above benchmark. 76% of second graders are currently within the tier-one level of instruction, while 15% require tier-two support and 9% needing tier-three level of support. I mentioned at an earlier meeting this fall, we're excited to partner this year with our Putnam Northern Westchester Serbosis Regional Coordinator of Math and Data, Anshula Sobran, who is working with all of our buildings in district to review student performance data and to help create an aligned K-12 vision for math and to support us in thinking about best practices in curriculum, instruction, and assessment to meet our students' needs and to make sure we're providing those proper pathways and supports. So now we'll shift over to SOMERS Intermediate School, reviewing their fall 2024 data. For fifth graders, similar to Primrose, a range of supports is used to help students progress throughout the year. This fall, 80% of fifth graders currently meet or exceed benchmark in STAR reading, with 12% approaching benchmark and 8% performing below. This fall, 62% of those fifth graders are working within the tier-one classroom instruction level, 28% requiring tier-two-level small-group-targeted support, and 10% require the tier-three levels of support and instruction. And like Primrose, all third-grade classrooms also deliver foundations instruction to support the development of decoding skills. The teachers also include the use of decodable texts and fluency passages. And in 3 through 5, teachers are also using the Witten Wisdom knowledge-building materials to reinforce content vocabulary and background knowledge and to make cross-curricular connections. Further multisensory supports continue to be implemented in K through 5, but not just through K through 5, across the district. We have PAF phonics and fluency reading support implemented for students as needed in grades 1 through 6. We also have some of our providers trained in Orton-Gillingham multisensory reading instruction, which is available for those students whose foundational needs really require this level of intensity and support in grades 3 through 9, but that can be available to other grades as well if students should need. And then in taking a look at math this fall in SIS STAR math, 82% of fifth graders meet or exceed the benchmark, with 10% approaching benchmark and 8% performing below the benchmark. Of that, 69% of students only require the tier-one general math instruction, with 20% needing the additional tier-two small group intervention and 11% requiring any further specialized instruction, either increased in frequency or intensity of supports in order to progress. So same across Primrose and SIS. Both buildings utilize data collaboration to determine how each student is responding to their programming and any supplements or any interventions. And the teams make adjustments accordingly throughout the school year to help students progress.
Do you have similar data for the fourth grade?
Yes, we do. We have it for all grade levels.
All grade levels. So there is some way of comparing sort of the progression of not every student, but some portion of students who can track their performance?
Yes, we do have those measures in place. We analyze those at the building level, looking for patterns where there are strengths, where there are needs, across a grade level, across a classroom, across a set of students receiving a certain intervention.
That'd be very interesting data, yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
I think we go through this almost every year, but for the benefit of people who might be watching at home, who sets the benchmark? Who determines that the meeting benchmark is at or above 40%?
Those are norms put out by STAR and their recommendation, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
So you're just looking at those benchmarks for STAR, so comparative. And I know we only are looking at the second and fifth grade. I know you chose the exit years for each grade level just because obviously it would be a really big report if we had to put in every grade. So looking at between Primrose and SIS, it just... So would I be interpreting it wrong if I were to say, you know, okay, in Primrose, it was benchmark was 65%, but only 60% of the kids got a core classroom support? And like 30, let's say 40% of kids ultimately needed second or fourth tier supports? So only some of those kids, then, of the 65 who are getting supports, were able to actually meet the benchmark who got those supports? Would they be overinterpreting the data?
No, no, because it's those things that are feeding into the results that we're getting. And for some students, they may not need supports the entire year to continue to progress.
Right.
Some may need continued support to continue to improve. You know, with little humans, they all come to us at different entry points, different developmental needs, different cognitive needs. So we could never say, of course, that 100% by a certain date are all going to be reading at grade level. Would I certainly love to say that? Of course I would, and I want that for all children. But we do need to respond to the developmental needs of the students and the way in which they're acquiring skills over time. So some may need supports for a short period of time, some may not need the additional supports, some may need it ongoing, depending what their developmental needs, cognitive needs are along the way.
Because then it looks like that in fifth grade, you know, the supports were almost appears more effective. I mean, I know that's a bad way to look at it, I guess, but almost more effective because 80% were reaching benchmark, but only 62% had core classroom support, whereas the others were actually seemed to be getting what they needed in order to access and meet those benchmarks. Is that kind of...
And I think it's also...
Or could it have to do with the re-norming, and then we're also looking at...
I think that's another piece of the puzzle and why we are so eager to dig into that re-norming information to see exactly what it means on our student performance. You know, as I mentioned before, across the nation, there are grade levels in schools where they're coming in below, where they would typically start a school year, and some where it's, "Oh, isn't that wonderful?" higher than they may typically start a school year. And we're seeing similar things happen here for our students. So it's understanding in the re-norming what's behind that. Are there skills that are more emphasized at a grade level than perhaps they were not before? Are there other different considerations post-COVID in a student's development and acquisition of skills that was a little bit different than prior to COVID? So all important questions for us to ask. I wouldn't say at this point it's just that the support's being different or effective or not effective that's affecting the results we're seeing.
I don't want anyone to kind of, right, I don't want anyone to kind of make a correlation with that because I know you guys also use other things than STAR. Like, these kids are assessed at multiple levels in multiple ways and...
Which is important, so you get a full picture. And, you know, as I mentioned, some of our... The information that we receive in from certain assessments, it gives us a score and not much else to work with, which is why it's important for us to have a well-rounded system and other ways to get that information we need to make those instructional decisions.
And I know we're not there yet, but even just look, you can't just rely on the state testing either because that...
Yeah, and we're going to actually get to that next here, yeah. Go for it, Harry.
Continue on this question. I was very interested in this. Since you say you have similar data on the fourth grade and third grade, actually, we can dig out two aspects of very informative information. One is, for example, about reading or learning for the native-speaking kids starting out versus, you know, not native English-language students. You can make comparison. And you can then study also the support structure, whether it needs to be modified according to the information you obtain from the data. So these charts, if you track from third grade, fourth grade, in fact, from kindergarten to second grade all along, you would discover a lot of information about how kids learn in those age, you know, sort of progression in age, and from their background, their background from, you know, whether they are native speaking, English-native speaking kids or they are from, you know, whatever, you know, social background, so on. That could help us really focus on questions like Amanda was asking, whether the support structure is properly designed or whether we should design in a way according to the age progression and so on. So I would love to see these kind of data if you can, offline, whatever. We can, you know, discuss this. I think it's very, very valuable since they are not just the state test type thing, which is a little too dry to squeeze out more. But this is really important for SOMERS to really follow on.
Well, I think I was trying to make the point, though, is that that's what they are doing. I mean, we might not see it on a day-to-day basis because it's, we're on the higher level of looking at it as a board, but that's what they're doing on a day-to-day level in the classrooms and as teachers and administrators in the building.
Yeah, but also will help us, Chris, or anybody, in terms of budgeting and planning, you know, programming, support, so on. I mean, it's correlated, yeah.
Our next slide here highlights the New York State ELA and math test information. In 2023, we saw a bit of a rise in the amount of SIS students partaking in New York State tests and pretty much a similar amount this past spring of 2024, just a little bit more. About 11% of students opted not to take the ELA test in 3 through 5, and 12.5% opted not to take the math test. There's really not hard data you can attribute to that. All students in grades 3 through 5 took the test computer-based for both ELA and math. That was one shift from the year prior, where we just had our fifth graders take it the computer-based version. But other than that difference, we don't have further data that explains a refusal rate. Even with these rates, it's still, like you're saying, it doesn't capture the performance of all students, which is why it's important for us to use our internal assessments as well to see and learn about... well to see and learn about our students' progress. Like last year, unfortunately, the state test data is not public facing yet. It's still embargoed. It will be available, though, shortly. Parents do have access to their individual child's score within Infinite Campus that's there, but overall grade or school performance is not available publicly yet. Once that is, this presentation will be updated to include that information and any comparisons that we make. And we will also include the results from the new fifth grade science test. Last spring was the first time our fifth graders took that version. It used to be a test in grade four. And we will make all of that information available on the school website as well.
Sorry, I think you said, so the opt-out rate's been lower this year than it was in previous, less people opted out?
Little bit.
Okay.
Tiny, tiny bit. Thank you.
Tell nothing significant as to-
Nothing that's really changing our comparison to the region as far as opt-outs go.
All right, because I know I asked that last year, like, why did we have so many people opt in? It's just preference or?
It's similar rates. You know, I think sometimes families think about that decision and what makes the most sense for their child. And we respect that as a district. Of course, we would love to have any student partake in that, but we do respect wishes of families.
Okay, thank you, Liz. We're going to shift our attention now to our secondary schools. So at SMS, students engage in inquiry-based learning aligned with the International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program Framework for Teaching and Learning, along with the New York State standards. Like at the elementary schools, students take benchmark assessments in reading and math several times during grades six through eight. The data from these assessments allow us to identify areas of success and areas for improvement and to take the steps necessary to ensure that students receive the appropriate tiers of intervention, as Liz explained. I do want to take a moment to thank the board for their recent visit to SMS, where we had the opportunity to witness the WIN or What I Need period in action. All students in grades six through eight engage in a period of learning that is designed for either support or enrichment, and that occurs every day. At the next board meeting on November twenty-six, teachers and students from the middle school will join us here for the board's share out with the community on that visit. As Liz also explained, what you see here on this page are the Fall 2024 STAR results, this time for the exit year of grade eight. The middle school building's SMART goal this year is to increase the percentage of students performing at or above benchmark to eighty-five percent or above in both reading and math. And you can see here that those current numbers are seventy-nine percent for reading and eighty-three percent for math. As Liz mentioned, we continue to work with our literacy consultants through PLC Associates, and we have partnered with the Regional Coordinator of Mathematics at Bosse's, who support our teachers through professional learning. And additionally, iXL provides actionable data for all students in both reading and math. Of course, the WIN period is another structure that provides opportunities for Tier One support for all students. And at Tiers Two and Three, students can receive additional targeted interventions. Moving to our next page. At SMS, students take state tests in ELA and math in the spring of grades six, seven, and eight, and in science in the spring of grade eight. Our percentage of participation at the middle school level remained consistent in 2024, and you can see that here, as Liz and Dom were just referencing. The New York State data has not yet been made publicly available at this time for the 2024 administration of those exams, so we don't see the 2024 results here. But as Liz said, we'll update this report as soon as that information is widely released, and that should be soon. Finally, we will move to Somers High School. For the past three years, as the capstone of their high school experience, seniors have completed an independent senior experience. The culminating project allows each student to showcase their skills, gain valuable hands-on experience, and demonstrate their readiness for life beyond high school. This year, the SHS Building SMART goal is to further enhance the senior experience, and one piece of that is including a more formal presentation component. We expect about a third of the senior class to conduct a formal public presentation of their work to an audience that goes beyond their classroom walls. More on that in the months to come. The ninety-six percent four-year and the ninety-nine percent six-year graduation rates have remained consistent over the years. Ninety percent of the class of 2024 pursued college after graduation, with the other ten percent choosing the workforce, taking a gap year, or entering the military. On our next two pages, we can see Regents data from previous school years. Like the state testing data for grades three through eight, the Regents exam performance data has not yet been made publicly available through New York State, and we will update these bar graphs demonstrating how our students performed compared with the PNW Bosse's average as soon as that information is posted. And we do expect that that New York State report card will be available shortly. While I cannot discuss specific numbers tonight, we can proudly share here tonight that our student performance has remained consistent on our Regents exams and in some areas increased. We want to acknowledge the efforts of our teachers in all of the subject areas for continuing to hold high expectations and drive student success, as they've navigated several shifts in the past few years, including changing testing requirements during the COVID years, changing state standards, and new exams over the past few years. Some points to note, last June, a new Algebra I Regents exam was administered, and this coming June, we'll be administering new Regents exams in Earth and Space Science and in Life Science Biology.
Is this going to be the last year of the Regents exams? I saw a New York State report, is it next year when they're going to phase them out?
No, so we we expected that there's going to be some shifts in the New York State graduation guidelines, as Liz referenced earlier, and I'll speak a little bit more about what exactly those changes are going to look like in terms of what's required for assessment for graduation are still to come. So one of the proposed shifts is to not tie graduation to the passing of certain specific Regents examinations. That doesn't mean that Regents exams won't be offered altogether. We're not entirely sure yet what that's going to look like.
Wasn't it the talk of that it could be one of the ways that a child could show how, an option versus?
Yes.
And they would shift it and they would probably phase it out over time, like the class of 2027 might be the last one to do it strictly as it is and then?
Yeah, the Blue Republican Commission's report is looking at the next ten years, so there will certainly be a phased approach to who's taking which assessments and toward what toward what end. We certainly don't expect state assessments to go away altogether at the high school level. It's just going to be a matter of not tying that to the graduation rate. As Amanda is saying, there could be alternate pathways for a student's graduation. If we move to this page here, thank you, Harry. In 2024, we continue to see the trend of fewer students taking the SAT and ACT, though, as you can see, the scores have remained consistent. But something to note regarding the SAT and ACT, following the pandemic, many colleges made the decision to go a test optional due to access issues for students. However, more recently, there are some schools and particularly more selective institutions that have once again begun to require these test scores. Of course, most institutions, they still emphasize a holistic review of applications. So for our college-bound students, it means weighing the benefits of submitting strong test scores versus focusing on other parts of their application. For the Fall 2025 Admission Cycle, according to the National Center for Fair and Open Testing, who did a tally, about eighty percent of U.S. four-year institutions are not requiring SAT and ACT scores or will not consider them. Again, we expect to see shifts in this, and as we identify these shifting trends in the changing expectations from higher education institutions, we will respond accordingly and continue to advise students to develop robust and balanced high school resumes. And Jimmy mentioned earlier tonight that we have admissions officers who come into the high school and work with kids on what they can expect from that process.
What does the evidence-based reading and writing look like?
That is your SAT reading exam and your SAT math exam on the typical eight-hundred-point scale.
So just like when we took the SATs back in the day, you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, that just have a fancy name.
Yeah, I'm not-
What you got on English versus what you got on math?
I'm not sure when they when they changed exactly what it's called. So one piece of the puzzle that we know is a crucial component for both college applications and the development of college-ready skills is course selection. And in 2024, we continue to see an increase in the number of graduates who had taken at least one advanced placement or international baccalaureate course in high school. Moving to our next page of data. In 2024, SHS saw its highest number of AP students yet with seven-hundred-and-nineteen exams taken. And I registered the students for every one of them in my previous role. So just over seventy-four percent of students taking those exams scored three or higher. And of the three-hundred-and-twenty-two students who took AP exams last year, one-hundred-and-twelve earned some level of AP scholar status, as you can see here. Additionally, Somers High School has been recognized by the College Board's AP School Honor Roll in the categories of college credit, seen here with the gold medal, college optimization, which is the platinum here, the highest level of recognition, and college culture with silver recognition, notably one percentage point away from gold. If we move from that sixty-four percent to sixty-five percent, we'll be in the gold category there as well. So again, just demonstrating the value that the College Board places on providing students with the opportunity to take AP courses and take AP exams, regardless of what score they might earn.
Do you think that now that we've had one year of where the school district pays for AP and IB exams, do you think that's also helps the hurdle for any students going forward or?
Yeah, the intention behind the district doing that is of course to eliminate that as a potential barrier for certain students and families to accessing those opportunities. And we do see this year in terms of registration for AP exams, it's right about the same as it was last year.
Yeah, I have I have two questions. Can I go back to the middle school on the science, the eighth grade science? It looks like our our performance is far better than the Bosse data. That's one subject area that are extremely higher than the average compared to reading, math, and other subjects. So what are the factors you think that's attributed to?
That's an excellent question. I think that we don't we don't have that 2024 data on here yet, although I do believe it was consistent. I'm not sure if the Bosse's average has remained consistent or gone up or down. I think it certainly speaks to the strength of our science programs in the middle school.
Relates to high school? Maybe even the high schools start sort of recruiting or promoting the science research program?
Certainly, I think that the science research program at the high school is something that is such a huge celebration that I think it certainly influences and inspires a lot of students. And our program here at the middle school is robust, in alignment with the state standards that are changing and in alignment with the NYPD. So we've certainly seen a lot of positive results of students exiting the middle school and deciding which science pathway they might take in ninth grade. There are a few options available to them, and we'll touch on some of the some of the science courses that are available at the high school shortly.
Perhaps we dig into the the data, maybe we could correlate some students that are performing well and also go into the science research program. If that's definitely correlation, we should publicize and we should really let the student body and the parents know about this correlation.
Yeah, absolutely, that's something to look at, thank you.
My second question is on high school, the SAT part.
Yes.
Where's the chart?
I think you were past it, yeah.
Passed it.
Page thirty-two. Thirty-two.
Not the SAT numbers.
Here.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, I think, first of all, you know, there's a big drop from two thousand twenty to later years that the takers, right, the takers are a big drop. Perhaps that's COVID, I don't know, one reason, right? But there's, you know, it's almost hundred, you know, it's half the people dropped, that's pretty significant.
That's when colleges stopped requiring it.
Right, but that's not my main question. My main question is, from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-four, the, for example, the mass mean score is really going down. That is a little bit, you know, my concern. Why is that, you know, keep on going down? After COVID, actually should turning up if I, you know, just guessing, but if you see the the score, six oh one, five seventy-one, five sixty-nine, five sixty-seven, is, you know, every year is going downward. Perhaps we could dig into to see, you know, why is that, you know, happening?
Absolutely, and I think that we are going, it's going to be interesting to see how those numbers on performance might change as we might start to see more students take the SAT and ACT again, according to these national shifts. And as far as math goes, we are, as Liz mentioned earlier, we are currently also looking at our math offerings and professional learning in the area of math K through twelve this year.
Okay.
So I'll transition now to page thirty-four. So shifting from some of our recognitions in the AP to the IB. In 2024, SHS also saw steady participation in the IB diploma program, with nine students meeting the requirements to graduate with the full IB diploma in addition to their New York State diploma, and one-hundred-and-sixty-five students total participating in either standard level or higher level IB courses. Notably, each of the juniors and seniors who take IB courses participate in robust college-level independent research experiences. So last year, over three hundred research projects and papers were completed in those IB courses. Every year, we hear from our alumni about how engaging in the research process in high school has provided them with the foundation in critical research skills that are required in college. So the the College Board, the IB, and importantly, other institutions as well, have conducted studies that show that students who take AP and IB courses are better prepared for college, even if they don't score highly on their exams. Students who take higher-level courses in high school often demonstrate greater academic persistence and have have higher college GPAs than their peers who did not, regardless of their exam scores in high school. So this research suggests that exposure to rigorous high school coursework fosters the academic skills and the levels of independence and confidence that are beneficial in college, and that these experiences help students transition into their college environments by encouraging that critical thinking and problem-solving skills.
Was that research we did or?
No, so the College Board has released studies on AP participation. The IB has released studies on IB participation. Obviously, they've done that as those organizations, but there have been other institutions and organizations that have conducted studies. There was one notably from the University of Florida that looked at AP and IB participation rates in high schools and then how that transferred to student performance in college as well.
How many students went out to try and ascertain an IB diploma this past year?
So year-to-date, it's about forty-five. Last year's 2024 was fifteen.
Fifteen.
With nine completing all of the requirements.
Yeah, one of the things that we probably could do is to, through Counselor's Office, to do a survey on the graduates who go to college and ask them about, you know, feedback, the AP, IB, or influence on their sort of future learning course and, you know, that feedback may be more direct.
Absolutely, so we do conduct surveys. We do have alumni come back and speak to our current students. We are looking at formalizing what that data looks like a little bit more, exactly to your question, to see, you know, if we can more specifically report on that. But certainly every year, that's one of the one of the highlights is having our graduates come back and hear from them about those experiences.
I know when I attended the NISBA convention a couple weeks ago, that was one of the vendors I brought back to the Counseling Department, was to look at formalizing that kind of exit interview process so that we could have actual hard data to look at, to say, okay, this is, it's not just anecdotal stories from individual students, but, okay, this is how college-ready I was by taking these different courses, so.
Yep.
I know we've been talking about it, and I think it would be nice to actually put it into-
Yeah, just make it a little bit more formal and consistent.
I think some other some other information that might be helpful for the for the overall community is I know from the the IB information nights at the high school, that one of those I attended, and it showed the amount of scholarships won by students who have gone through the IB process or received an IB diploma, and it's a it's a significant amount of money. It's a significant amount of scholarships have been awarded to to young students who finish those programs. And that's something that I think some members of the community might might be an eye-opening experience for them. So if we can somehow find a way to include that kind of information as well, because that's a very clear indication of what this program offers to our community.
Absolutely, and we do track the data on the financial packages that are offered. We have had students receive one-hundred percent tuition. We have had students enter college as sophomores, and certainly all of those things are very appealing to families from a financial standpoint, as well as that, you know, experience, which experience for their students.
Stop me from wrong, Tara, but even if, whether or not the kid gets the IB diploma or not, like, they usually get their college acceptance long before they know whether or not they have the IB diploma, for instance. So it's really more the colleges looking at the fact that they went through that rigorous process of completing that work, whether it be the IB courses or the AP courses or a mixture of the two, like most of our kids do, to be honest.
Absolutely, and we have heard from a handful of students, anecdotally, that their IB diploma candidacy before whether they received the diploma or not was a clincher on being moved from the waitlist to being accepted, whether it be IB participation or AP participation in interviews with colleges, that those are important talking points of not, again, this is before they might have a score, that the experience in those courses is something that colleges look at favorably.
All right, because the next few months are when the college acceptances come out, right? But their scores aren't going to come out until July after they graduate.
Correct, and then depending on what those scores are and what those institutions accept in terms of scores, that can obviously translate to a college credit and financial savings. So we do also want to highlight the science research program at SHS, as Ifa brought up earlier. This year, we have fifty-nine students participating, and each year, SHS students are recognized in regional and national competitions for their hard work. Last spring, Somers hosted the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair, and we also had six science research international Genius Olympiad winners. Very proud of them. And as we move to our last page here, science research is one of the high schools' offerings that allow students to earn dual enrollment credit. SHS partners with several colleges and universities to offer students the chance to earn college credit while still in high school. You can see those courses, like our Project Lead the Way courses and some of our World Language offerings listed here. And there are currently 525 seats filled in dual enrollment courses. And once more, simply going back to those advanced course offerings in AP and IB, SHS now offers thirty-eight, and that's up one from last year. That includes eighteen AP courses, eighteen IB courses, and the two additional IB Theory of Knowledge courses that are taken just by those students who take the IB diploma program and meet those requirements. So Liz began our presentation tonight by discussing the shift in New York State graduation measures that have been proposed by the Blue Ribbon Commission. We will see exactly what those changes look like in the coming years, but we know that the aim is to prepare students to be engaged citizens and lifelong learners equipped with the skills relevant to today's workforce and the global society. In Somers, we are ready for this. Our elements of excellence align with New York State's proposed Portrait of a Graduate. The different pathways to success and the multiple measures of assessment that we already offer will continue to be vital as we move forward. And I will conclude by thanking the Board and the community for their support in our district's mission to engage every learner by offering these various pathways for students to follow their passions and to become college and career-ready with the supports that they each need to achieve that success. Thank you.
Could I ask just one more question on IBs?
Sure.
This S, what are they called? SL, HL exams?
Yes.
Can you give us a little more detail what these two exams?
Sure, so SL means standard level and HL means higher level.
Yes, I understand that.
So standard level is, just so that everybody's on the same page, so standard level courses are typically one-year course.
One-year course.
And HL courses typically span two years. So in history and English, for example, we offer the HL, so a student will take IB history or IB English in eleventh grade and in twelfth grade to achieve that HL, take the HL exams and achieve the HL.
Basically, it's the two-year versus one-year.
Yep, and some of our offerings are only SL, like IB Business Management is an SL, among others.
And just real quick, actually, before you guys sit down too, like, I think it might be important to note that teachers don't just teach AP or IB or Regents classes, they, like, one teacher's going to teach across the board all three of those types of classes, correct?
Absolutely. We might have teachers who are teaching a ninth-grade NYPD course and eleventh, twelfth-grade AP course. We might have teachers teaching APs and IBs. So our students, our teachers have received professional learning in good teaching practice. Of course, AP and IB might require specific trainings depending on what level and what the course is, but our professional learning continues to be catered to those classroom strategies that we know are beneficial for students at all levels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so then we're going to move on to financial reports. We're going to have the acceptance of warrant reports, statements of revenues, treasurer's report, budget status report. So, so accepted. Will approve the minutes resolved at the Board of Education, having received copies of minutes of the meetings of ten twenty-two twenty-four and ten thirty twenty-four, hereby approves the same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? That brings us to our personnel consent agenda. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby offers the, sorry, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Moving to the CSE, CPSE reports. Resolved that the Board of Education, having received copies of recommendations of the meetings, is listed in the attached memo, hereby approves the same. The costs for these services are contained budgeted in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay. And then it brings us to our business consent agenda, which I believe Harry will cover for Chris tonight if anyone has any comments, but I make the motion before I ask you for any commentary, right? Resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached business agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Harry, any comments before we?
Just the comments, we have the small tax, sorciari, nineteen thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars and eleven cents on a piece of property off of Route Six, and we also have the acceptance of a donation for the purchase of two new 3D printers, and that is coming from the Somers Middle School PTA Septa to purchase those 3D printers, a little over a thousand dollars in the donation for those two 3D printers.
Okay, so anyone have any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay. Attendance at a conference. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Somer Central School District does hereby approve a request from the Board of Education trustee, Margaret DiLorenzo, to attend the Westchester Putnam School Board Association's Forty-seventh Annual Regional Dinner on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at a cost of eighty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Thank you, Margaret, for attending. I know it's going to be on the Foundation Aid formula, so I'm sure you'll take lots of notes and bring those back.
I sure will. Thank you.
Attendance.
Explain it in great detail.
In great detail, yes.
I will. See if they made any headway on changing that formula. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Somer Central School District does hereby approve a request from Board of Education President Amanda Candell to attend the Westchester Putnam School Board Association's Education Law Lunch Series or Sessions on eleven eight, one seventeen, and four twenty-five at a cost of twenty dollars for each session.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? And that brings us to our second public comment period on any open items. Okay, no takers, then we will move to final comments.
No comment?
Comment?
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, I have a few comments. First, I'd like to congratulate the SMS PTA donation for this 3D printer. That's a very, very useful tool and a very educational tool. Secondly, I really like to thank the two reports on the Twenty-Fifth Century Skills because as to my earlier questions, it's very interesting to learn these data, and we can find a lot of things from these data. For example, in the, even take the state tax data that we didn't ask question on, that if you look at the eighth grader score and seventh grader score, sixth grader score, basically we have a tracking data in there. Sometimes even the same student population could be a majority of the grade that goes, moves through six, seven, eight, and it's all in those data points. So we certainly could dig into these data a little more. Nowadays, everybody talk about big data, big, you know, data analysis. Fundamentally, it's the same thing as the old times that the computer first invented. When you have number, you really want to know what the number means. We now have a lot more, you know, to our disposal. I think we should do that for our educational purposes. So that's very, very important, and I appreciate the effort that the administration is doing to show us these data. Third, I want to make a comment which is actually related to this report and that last meeting when the Global Citizens Report was given, as I was talking about that. It's very difficult to quantify progress we make in global citizenship type of, in that domain compared to the learning skills, there's a data test and so on and so forth. But the global citizenship is very important, and I want to spend just a minute to say something. Last week was the election, and our election was very successfully concluded. The Forty-seventh President is elected, has won a popular votes, more than four million votes, and the college electoral college votes, I think it's three twelve to two twenty or something like that. It's also very overwhelming. And the Senate is also favored to the presidency in the sense of forty-nine to forty-seven plus four independent, and House is also favored to the Forty-seventh President. So I think we come to a time that this country has a very unique opportunity to really move forward with a lot more efficiency and more united actions. I think the students in, you know, now, in few years will be in college, sometimes you will enter workforce. So I think this is an important aspect for the global citizenship to understand that every year or every two years we have a election. Sometimes these election results have significance. We ought to bring that to our school, let our student understand the real sort of meaning of a democracy. Sometimes democracy has some deficiencies, it's creating division, it's in conflict, but sometimes it will unite and create great, you know, results. I just personally hope this past election results are good, is making the country moving forward as a United States. Okay, thank you.
All right, Sarah wanted to make a comment. I wasn't at the last meeting, but we had the SMS visit a couple of weeks back. It was one of the sessions we sat in, I forgot who the teacher's name was, they were having a discussion on Meditations by Marcus Aurelius. Actually, great discussion, so sort of felt we had a, we were moving along pretty quickly, but I just, I can't remember the teacher's name, but I just wanted to give recognition. I actually went out and bought a copy of it myself right afterwards.
That's cool.
Showing how you're a lifelong learner. That's great, Tom.
Yeah.
That's right.
So thank Jimmy for his updates. He always does a good job, and I want to thank Tara and Liz for their presentation. It was very informative. Guys put a lot of work into it. Thank you.
Yeah, I also want to thank Tara and Liz for that very helpful presentation, and it's very helpful to see how these test scores are moving and changing, especially with the renorming. I think that's very informative, and I'm looking forward to seeing that 2024 data when that's available. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to attend the dinner. I'm so excited, and I'll meet other regional board members throughout Westchester and Putnam. Thank you.
I want to start with, Monday, we had terrific holiday ability to thank our veterans who have dedicated portions of their lives to all of us, for all of us to be thankful to them, including you down. Thank you.
Darrell as well.
Yeah.
Darrell as well.
Oh, Darrell's here. Yes, thank you, Darrell. And I know we have a lot of veterans in our, in our community, so I thank all of them. Thank you for the presentation tonight. It highlights that I know through the years, our district has been really involved in taking the data, seeing what it means, tracking, evaluating, using that to kind of figure out always the next steps, where we need to adjust and where we're finding, you know, the good results and everything. And, you know, I think, as you described through this, these aren't just numbers, these are students, and it's not just a number that is defining them at all. This is one piece of it, and you're looking at them, a whole picture of lots of different aspects to see what their needs are, or, you know, where they need more challenges or more supports. So I just appreciate that our district is really invested and has been for quite a few years in doing that. Good luck to our sports teams that are in the, in their tournaments. Exciting times, culmination for some students in quite a long journey of a lot of dedication. So good luck to all of you. Good luck to our seniors, as they've been going through some pretty intense processes at times, and keeping perspective of, you know, all the things that are open to all of us on our next steps. Thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you, Tom and Darrell, for your service. Absolutely. Yesterday was a great day for recognizing all of our veterans in our community. I wanted to just start out with a quick superintendent search process update, just to kind of recap a little bit, since on October thirtieth, we had the special meeting of the Board of Education where Susan Wallin and Ken Mitchell from School Leadership presented their recommendations for superintendent specifications. So in other words, we, who we as a community are looking for in our next superintendent. And these specifications were discussed and adopted by the Board and can be found on our website under the Superintendent Search tab. The meeting can also be viewed on the website as well, so you can see the whole thing if you so desire, it's about an hour. These specifications were created after school leadership conducted multiple focus groups and received over four hundred survey responses from the community. The PowerPoint presentation which describes the feedback received can also be found on the website. The survey and focus groups became the foundation for drafting the proposed Somer Superintendent Position specifications. So once we adopted these specifications, this ended the public community input, and we are now in the recruitment phase of the process. So as we've discussed in the past, in order to get best quality candidates to come forward, we have agreed to keep this a closed and confidential process, meaning the candidates will be kept confidential and only be interviewed by the Board. Keep in mind that we take with all of us this information gathered from the community into these interviews. The seven of us will do that. The position is currently being advertised, and our recruiters are also actively seeking candidates that fit the profile that we created, and we'll continue to give updates on the application process as it goes along, and we expect to conduct interviews around the end of January. And the Board cannot thank everyone enough for providing your input and especially your time to assist in this very important job of finding our next school superintendent. So now I'd also like to thank Tara and Liz for the wonderful presentation tonight. I know while testing's so important, it's also too important, important to remember that our kids are not just numbers, but I also know that you guys are looking at multiple data points as well as the child themselves and really getting to what each child needs in their education and their growth, and the supports that have to be in place, which is always an ever-shifting process. I know I shared with some of the admins the presentation on special education I attended at the NISBA conference. So part of that presentation discussed the governors, that the governor is creating this dyslexia and dysgraphia.
this dyslexia and dysgraphia task force, and they're going to be coming out with their findings by, I think, the end of the year. But a few things that stuck out with me was that Organ Gillingham is not a program, but a process, and the importance of having in your reading programs of phonemic awareness, a phonics, a vocabulary, and your reading comprehension for a sound reading program. And I have to say, that's clearly what has been being done, and that you guys have embarked on your journey with PLC Associates these past two years. And you could see that the teachers have, you know, with the wit and wisdom being what it is, but you guys have all dove in and really implemented this program, and just for the betterment of the students, and it's showing. And they also discussed the importance of the MTSS supports, which we've, our schools invested so much time in working off the different data points, and I know you continuously review all the data, making sure our kids are getting what they need. So that's been great, and I think it brings us to our next meeting of where we're going to see, we're going to discuss the site visit where we went and saw what the kids did in their what I need section of their day at the middle school, which I know that program has evolved over the past several years, the past three years that it's been implemented, or I guess four years. God, my kids are in tenth now. So it's just great to see the evolution and see where it started and where it's really landed, so I look forward to that at our next meeting. I know the NYPD Information Night was a huge success as well, that Janice Catino put on here at the middle school for parents to come and get to know what the program is about and what their kids are, and how their kids are learning. And I also just wanted to draw everyone's attention to a new website communication flow chart that our, that Nancy and Harry and the administrators have put together. And it's just on, if you have who to contact for, if you have a question, a concern, or a compliment, and just, or a compliment, I think that's important to include too. And, you know, it's just for the different types of situations, and then it gives like a first step, a second step, a third step, a fourth step, if your questions are still not being answered, and who to go to. So that can be found on our website under a couple of different places, I think, in the Families website, in the Family section. So that's just a good way to know if you're sitting there thinking, hey, I don't know who I need to contact in order to compliment, or I have a question because something's going on with my kid at school and I have a concern. So a great resource, and I thank you guys for providing that, so. And that's it. I know that was a long update, I apologize.
I'll be briefer. I'd like to start thanking Tara and Liz for their presentation tonight. It's another key component in our Forward in Excellence report. I'd also like to thank the SOMERS Intermediate School PTA for sponsoring Ned's Kindness Adventures, which is a live, virtual, interactive assembly that will be presented to the students in the gym tomorrow, November thirteenth, which is also World Kindness Day. I'd like to thank the SOMERS Middle School PTA and SEPTA for their generous donations towards the purchase of the three, the two three-D printers that we approved at the meeting today. I'd like to congratulate Jimmy Galavan, who was quoted in an article in Education Week in their October twenty-eighth edition. He was quoted in the article, "Students don't want to talk about politics either." That was before the election. And then I'd like to thank all of the veterans for their service to our country. And finally, I'd like to commend the entire SOMERS community, especially the students and staff, for their support of each other during the tragic, the tragedy suffered by the Ramundi family two weeks ago. We had offers for support from many different community organizations, other school districts, county organizations, including the Regional Crisis Team, and the availability of emotional support dogs. We have one that's used regularly at SOMERS High School. We had three additional ones available during the week at the high school and the middle school, and we're continuing to have that support offered to us as we go forward, because it's a situation that's still ongoing in our hearts. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Harry. So be it resolved that the regular meeting of the Board of Education be adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained?
Opposed.